Any changes to the agenda? Thank you, and motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councillor Byer, Councillor Foley, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you. Just before we go to general inquiries, I would like to read a statement in regards to the incident this weekend at the Norplex Pool. This is a statement from the City of Thompson regarding drowning at the Norplex Pool. On April 23rd, 2017, at approximately 3:20 PM, lifeguards at the Norplex Pool responded to a swimmer in distress. A seven-year-old boy was retrieved but was unresponsive. RCMP and EMS services were activated and the boy was transported to Thompson General Hospital where he was pronounced deceased after resuscitation efforts failed. It is believed that the boy, who was from Split Lake Manitoba, was with a group of friends and may have wandered off and entered deeper water where he was unable to keep himself afloat. Thompson RCMP have stated that there was no foul play suspected. The City of Thompson will be conducting an internal investigation of the incident alongside the continuing investigations of the Thompson RCMP and the medical examiner's offices. On behalf of the City of Thompson, I took the opportunity to contact Chief Doreen Spence from Split Lake and offered our community's condolences to both her and her community and to the family. Our city administration, Mr. Sepatelli and Deputy Chief Borgan have reached out and spoken with the family, again extending our condolences. From that perspective, we will not comment any further as the incident is under investigation and we will move forward with that. So with that, I will call for general inquiries. Are there any questions from the general public? If there are, please come forward to the table, state your name and ask your question, please. Welcome.
Godfrey Bohajer. And my question is an issue concerning safety, I suppose, with respect to the potholes around the city. Have they started working on fixing potholes yet or no?
Yes, we have two crews.
Two crews?
Yes.
And how many days a week do they start or do they work on them?
Every day.
Yes.
They've started two weeks ago, correct?
Confirmed with Mr. Kavirsky, the start of the pothole repairs, approximately two weeks ago, yes.
But the reason I'm bringing it up, it's not that I want to be criticizing people or criticizing the city, but you see signs that people are working, no people are working. The potholes are still there. If you had two crews working five days a week, it should have been done by now. It's...
I would just offer... Excuse me, I would just offer that from the question you've raised, the city administration advises, and I can confirm that we have two crews working five days a week on pothole repair. It continues and will continue until all are repaired.
Listen, Mr. Mayor, what I'm saying is they could have been more diligent about things and it should have been done by now. Like, it's a very, very dangerous situation. Now, you're concerned about the potholes, looking at them all the time rather than the traffic around you, the people crossing. It's dangerous. I've got to go to the left to make a right turn on some places. You know? So...
Excuse me, we have signed, we are concerned about safety. Again, the question about potholes has been addressed and I would only offer to the general public is that you drive to the conditions of the road or lack of road thereof. We know there are spots that we've had to close actual sections of road, but this will continue for the near future. Please be diligent in regards to the conditions of the road. We are working on it. And are there any other questions?
Well, I thank you for giving me the opportunity, but I'm not satisfied with what I heard.
Other questions or comments? Please come forward. Please state your name and ask your question, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Chu Chang. I look at your draft down here for the 2017 budget. And I have a question to ask you is, on 2016, your revenue coming from your water and sewage is about $5.8 million roughly, but your administration fees is $1.7 million, which is approximately 29% of the cost. Can you explain to me why it's so high?
I'll just go to Ms. Krentz to just discuss briefly the makeup of administration costs. Ms. Krentz?
Um, yes, so under the utility, council has passed a new policy to transfer some administration costs to the utility, so that includes the cost of any of the administration, like payroll, those types of things, as well as the cost of paving and patching, repairing any of the work that's been done for watering, surface breaks and main breaks. So that makes some administration costs as well as the actual administration, so the billing of the utility, the supervision and all those types of things are included in there as well.
My next question is, how many people are involved in these administrations on the utility bill?
We can get back to you with that, the specific number? I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get back to you, yep.
Next meeting? Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions, second time? Third and final? Thank you. We'll move on to the adoption of minutes. We have Resolution 2017-104, moved by Councillor Byer, seconded by Councillor Smook. Be resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, April 10th, 2017, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Kerry, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Next, we have the 2017 Financial Plan Public Hearing Minutes of April 20th. This is Resolution 2017-105, moved by Councillor Byer, seconded by Councillor Smook. Be resolved that the minutes of public hearing for the 2017 Financial Plan held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Thursday, April 20th, 2017, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Kerry, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Now, we have committee reports. We have the Recreation and Community Services Committee's report, and it is attached to the minutes. We'll go to the Chair of the Recreation and Community Service Committee, Councillor Foley, to present the report.
Thank you. The Recreation and Community Services Committee report from January 1st to April 30th, 2017. The committee members are myself, Dennis Foley as Chair, Councillor Blake Ellis as Co-Chair, Mayor Dennis Fenske, Gary Sepatelli, City Manager Jim English, Samantha Skiback, Andrew Hillaby, and Lyle Zelkey. Community representatives are Regina De Silva-Gibbons from the Boys and Girls Club, Brian Lyon from the School District of Mystery Lake, and Virginia Goulet from UCN. Citizen representative is Bruce Krentz. So the purpose of the role of this committee is to review the needs of recreational support within the City of Thompson and recommend amendments to the recreation plans of the city, to review the needs for upgrading and a replacement of recreational facilities in the city, to encourage and promote and develop the Thompson arts and culture, to liaise with the community organizations that lead to an enhanced quality of life within Thompson, to make recommendations to council on available grants, funding, and other opportunities that could be assessed by community groups, to administer the master parks plan. The administrative liaison with the Recreation and Community Service Committee is the Director of Recreation, Parks and Culture, which is Andrew Hillaby. We've had the concert series, the city hosted two individual performer events that were moderately attended, Luke McMaster, January 13th, 2017, at the Leckman Theatre, and Rain Hamilton, which was February 2nd and 3rd, 2017, at the Leckman Theatre. The city hosted the Royal Manitoba Theatre Centre last train to Nibroq, February 15th, 2017, at the Leckman Theatre as well, and it was a very good turnout with that one. The best event hosted was the Munchbusters Prairie Theatre Exchange, February 12th to 13th, 2017, at the Leckman Theatre. It was a packed performance each day. Due to the popularity of the children's shows compared to the adult shows, Recreation Department will be putting more effort into securing children's shows in the future. For programming events, staff assisted with the Winterfest Committee, which was very successful with multiple events over the course of the weekend. Winterfest was February 24th to 26th, 2017. At the Norplex Pool, the tender for the evaporator for the Dektron is complete and the work has... was completed mid-April. The tender for the electrical upgrade is complete and work will begin early May. Staff has been tasked with developing one special event per month at the pool for all of 2017. School user groups from January to April, the Special Services School Group started coming in as of January 10th to March 27th with instruction provided. A total of 64 high needs children are in this group. Artie Parker Outdoor Education, February 28th to March 10th, a total of 32 students provided instruction. Kayaking was between March 13th to 24th for Artie Parker Outdoor Education, total of 32 students. And Lighthouse Wabunuck School Program for After School, total of six students. Juniper Schools, grade fours had swimming lessons on March 6th, a total of 24 students completed one set. Westwood Schools, grade fours are currently in lessons, April 17th to the 28th, a total of 19 students. 200% are attended swimming every Thursday from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM for aquatherapy, non-instructed with four participants. In regards to the VRCC, staff has assisted with the Wall of Fame Committee with their project. Staff has begun to collect sport banners from figure skating, hockey, lacrosse, rennet, curling, and other sports that are generally hosted in the VRCC. The goal is to remount all the banners in the CA and the GB Arena before August 2017. Events that we've had in the VRCC, January, we've had the Prince Richard Hockey Tournament, we've had the Tigers Tournament. In February, we had the Skate Thompson Regional Competition, the Munt Cup Hockey Tournament. March, we had the KTC Hockey Tournament, double A provincials. March 12th, we had the Skate Thompson Ice Show. We also had the novice and pre-novice tournament. May 27th, we had the Gordon Beard Ice Was Removed. In April, we had the Steel Workers Hockey Tournament, the Skate Thompson Test Day Event, the Thompson Tumblers Gymnastics Provincial Meet, and coming up, we've got the Relay for Life Event, which will be April 29th. In regards to the cemetery, the staff met with the Cemetery Ad Hoc Committee, staff are working with the Cemetery Ad Hoc Committee to assist with a commemorative event being planned for late August 2017. Safe Operations, senior staff received safe Manitoba training in April. Recreation and Community Services Committee received delegations from the following groups: Thompson Rennet regarding the inductee for the Wall of Fame, Thompson Committee Foundation regarding possible partnership for Canada Day 2017, Shane Cripps regarding an upcoming mixed martial arts event that will be held at the VRCC June of 2017. Myself, administration, I'd like to thank the Recreation and Community Service Committee for their continued guidance and support. And that is the report as written.
Thank you. I'll go for administration, anything to add? Thank you. Councillor, any questions of the report? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to resolutions. The next resolution up is to approve the multi-party agreement between the City of Thompson, Sport Manitoba Inc., and the 2018 Thompson Manitoba Games Host Society, Inc. We have a memo from the city manager. The resolution is Resolution 2017-106, moved by Councillor Ellis, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas on January 16th, 2017, council passed Resolution Number 2017-026, agreeing to host the 2018 Powersmart Manitoba Winter Games to be held March 4th to the 10th, 2018. And whereas Sport Manitoba, Inc. requires entering into a multi-party agreement with the City of Thompson and the local host society detailing the terms and conditions and responsibilities, now therefore be it resolved, the council approved the City of Thompson entering into the multi-party agreement with Sport Manitoba, Inc. and the 2018 Thompson Manitoba Games Host Society, Inc. We'll go to administration for support.
Just for the council's and the public's information, really, the Manitoba Games is a multi-sport event that happens, that alternates every two years, from summer games one cycle to winter games the next. City of Thompson will be hosting the Winter Games March 4th to 10th in 2018. As certain requirements of any host community to host the Games, obviously, there is resolutions that are required by Sport Manitoba to undertake the process. Really, the multi-party agreement is the standard document or agreement that has been put into place by Sport Manitoba that outlines the specific roles and responsibilities and requirements of all three parties. Sport Manitoba themselves, the Community Host Society that has been established, and the City of Thompson as a municipal organization. So this is really the... this agreement is really a housekeeping item, as council has passed previous resolutions to host the Games and to cover any deficit if the Games do incur a deficit.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Councillor Ellis.
...for the city in 2018 as well as a sporting event, so... and this is just another step towards that.
Deputy Mayor Valentino?
I'll be supporting this also, and Sport Manitoba is definitely walking our host society step by step as we're on a bit of a time crunch, and they were in the city on Thursday again to meet with the host society to make sure that everything is on track, and definitely our committee is. I encourage all of you to take a volunteer role if you can, because it's going to be a great, great time for our city, and they'll be ready to roll out their committee members and their volunteer hours and things they're going to be looking for very shortly, but everything is on track, and Sport Manitoba is definitely a big part of helping us get through this.
Thank you. Councillor, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Sorry, let's do that again. All those in favor? Kerry, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve supporting the FCM Legal Defence Fund and a letter from FCM. This is Resolution 2017-107, moved by Councillor Smook, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, Legal Defence Fund has been a critical tool in defending the national legal interests of Canadian municipalities. And whereas FCM has established a long-term strategy to recapitalize the Legal Defence Fund annually and is encouraging members to contribute two cents per capita, now therefore be it resolved, the council approved the contribution of $316.92 to the FCM Legal Defence Fund. We'll go to administration for support?
The city was in receipt of a letter from FCM in regards to the Legal Defence Fund. The city passes a resolution every year for contribution to FCM based on per capita. As the letter indicates, I mean, obviously, their Legal Defence Fund has been depleted over the time. This was discussed at the Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, and the value of this organization to municipalities as the City of Thompson, the discussion was to bring forth a resolution for payment of this amount for the Legal Defence Fund. Really, and it's a voluntary invoice, but I think that just, given the value of this organization in enhancing municipal issues across Canada, it was felt that worthwhile to bring forth, to consider a resolution. FCM will continue with this voluntary invoice on an annual basis going forward.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Councillor Smook. Anything to add?
No, I agree that we should pay it for the services that we receive through FCM. I think it's a very small contribution on our part.
Thank you. Councillor, any other questions or comments? Councillor Calata?
In the past, that we may have received one bill per term, and they're asking for an annual contribution now, but I believe that may be lower on an annual basis than it was previously, but we certainly didn't have a bill every year prior, and I believe it may have been once per term, but I do think this is a lower amount than we received before.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Kerry, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to amend the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. That's Resolution 2017-108, and I will call Deputy Mayor Valentino to come forward and take the chair. I will recuse myself from the discussion. Deputy Mayor Valentino?
All right, this is Resolution 2017-108. It is moved by Councillor Ellis and it is seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas on February 13th, 2017, council has passed Resolution Number 2017-053, appointing the Finance and Administration Committee Council Representatives Deputy Mayor Valentino, Councillor Byer, and Mayor Fenske to the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. And whereas Mayor Fenske has recused himself from the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team, now therefore be it resolved that council appoint, and the name has been left blank at this point, to fill the vacancy on the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. So I'll go to administration for support.
This resolution was discussed at the Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, of which is to replace Mayor Fenske with a councillor, with one councillor, as a vacancy on the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. At that meeting, we had four councillors who had expressed interest to let their names stand, their councillor Smook, councillor Wong, councillor Calata, and councillor Matichuk. So as we have multiple councillors that have put their names forth, we will have to undertake a vote to determine the successful councillor.
Okay, so we proceed with the vote? Yeah, so you have your piece of paper in front of you, so you will write down the name of the one councillor that you will... are you looking for me? To represent on the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. And those names, once again, are councillor Smook, councillor Calata, councillor Wong, and councillor Matichuk. I'll need a motion to destroy the ballots, please. Moved by councillor Smook, seconded by councillor Ellis. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's Kerry. So the resolution before us is Resolution 2017-108, and it is moved by councillor Ellis and it is seconded by councillor Byer. Whereas on February 13th, 2017, council has passed Resolution Number 2017-053, appointing the Finance and Administration Committee Council Representatives Deputy Mayor Valentino, councillor Byer, and mayor Fenske to the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. And whereas Mayor Fenske has recused himself from the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team, now therefore be it resolved that council appoint councillor Smook to fill the vacancy on the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. Go to administration for support? I will go to the mover, councillor Ellis. Anything to add?
I have a resolution.
I'll go to council for any comments or questions. Councillor Matichuk?
I'll be voting against this for a couple reasons. First of all, it was the Finance and Administration Committee that was appointed, not individuals, so it should have went to picking a new team totally. As it is, I see there being an overrepresentation by the Finance and Administration Committee with two members on this team.
Thank you. Councillor Wong?
I would like to make a further amendment. I'd like to add three more councillors, that means total of six. Due to the mayor recuse himself, and two other councillors show no interest, confirm no interest, so I'd like to be, all councillors included, to be in the negotiation team. First, I'm considered as the opposition. There's none of the opposition in the negotiation team, so I'd like to see equal representative, three and three. So six, I don't see a reason why not. All should be involved, except the two show no interest and one recuse. And I'd also like to ask for the recorded vote, please.
Okay, so you're just providing those for comments? That's your comments? Okay, thank you.
Is councillor Wong putting forward a motion to amend?
You're putting forward a motion to amend? This motion? Okay.
Total of six.
Okay, I'll need a seconder to councillor Wong's, seconded by councillor Matichuk. So we have an amendment to this resolution on the table. So I look for direction. Do we go directly to a vote? City Manager Sepatelli?
I think from what I'm... ascertaining from what he's looking at is that since you had three other councillors put their names forth, is that he wants it amended to appoint councillor Smook, councillor Wong, councillor Matichuk, and councillor Calata as the amended resolution, correct?
All right, so six altogether.
Okay. With those added. Okay. No, no, I understand. I just wanted to get what the amendment is.
So right now, on the floor, we have amended resolution by councillor Wong, as he would like to amend this resolution to add four more councillor names, three more councillors' names to this resolution of 2017-108, and the names to be added would be councillor Calata, councillor Matichuk, and councillor Wong. Councillor Matichuk has seconded councillor Wong's amended motion. And it will be an undebatable motion, so we will go directly to the recorded vote that councillor Wong has asked for. So I will ask for all those in favor of the amended motion to vote in favor of it, all those in favor. So we have councillor Calata, councillor Byer, councillor Matichuk, and councillor Wong voting in favor of the amended resolution. Those opposed? And we have councillor Foley, councillor Smook, councillor Ellis, and Deputy Mayor Valentino voting opposed, so the motion is defeated. So now we will go to the resolution that is on the table. I will reread it again. It is Resolution 2017-108, moved by councillor Ellis, seconded by councillor Byer. Whereas on February 13th, 2017, council passed Resolution Number 2017-053, appointing the Finance and Administration Committee Council Representatives Deputy Mayor Valentino, councillor Byer, and mayor Fenske to the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. And whereas mayor Fenske has recused himself from the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team, now therefore be it resolved that council appoint councillor Smook to fill the vacancy on the Grant and Lew Negotiating Team. That is the resolution on the table. Is there any further comments or questions, councillor Foley?
Just that I'll be voting in favor, and just a further comment in regards to something that councillor Wong has said. There is no opposition within this council, nor should there be. We are all here for the same reason, to move forward. I guess maybe I'm the only one out of a few that's taken this a little bit serious, but I'll be supporting the motion.
Councillor Calata?
Thank you. I take it seriously. I've repeatedly heard that there's no one here who has any experience, and I went to my old files and I've shared them with councillor Wong and councillor Matichuk, and I was on the last two negotiating teams. The last team was made up of councillor Hogan, councillor Lefrenier, and councillor Calata. And I think that previous, the previous term, we had the same situation, six, three vote on...
So all those in favor of this amended motion to the resolution, please vote in favor.
And I'd like a recorded vote.
He'd like a recorded vote? Okay. And those in favor of this amended resolution? In favor is Counselor Calata, Counselor Matichuk, and Counselor Wong. All those opposed? Counselor Foley, Counselor Wong, or Counselor Smook, my apologies, Counselor Ellis, and Deputy Mayor Valentino, so is defeated. So back to the original resolution, oh, sorry, and Counselor Byer. My apologies, Counselor Byer. So back to the original resolution that's on the table. I do not think I need to read it again. We'll go to the vote now. So all those in favor of Resolution 2017-108, to vote, please, in favor. Voting in favor, oh, I didn't say recorded vote, my apologies. Those opposed? Okay, all those in favor? And opposed? It is carried. Thank you.
We are now moving on to a resolution to approve the screening officer contract, and we also have a memo from the public safety officer. This is Resolution 2017-109, moved by Deputy Mayor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the Council approve entering into a contract with Brian Taylor as the screening officer for the City of Thompson for the period of April 25th, 2017, to April 24th, 2018. We'll go to Administration for support.
This is sort of part of the process that we have to put in place or establish the screening officer as per the Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act, which Council passed on February 13th of 2017. And really, it's the first line of appeal on parking tickets. So really, entering into a contract with this individual will satisfy that requirement of the establishment of the screening officer to hear any appeals that are taken forward through the parking ticket process.
Thank you. I'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Valentino. Anything to add?
I just thought, obviously, I'll be supporting this, and it's good to see that we have somebody in place, as this, as City Manager Sepatelli spoke, because it's municipal bylaw enforcement and it's come down by the province, it's good to see that we've been able to hire somebody to get this screening officer part in place.
Counsel, any other questions or comments in regards to the resolution? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Karen Denas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the 2017 financial plan. Resolution 2017-110, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Be resolved, the Council approve the 2017 financial plan. Go to Administration for support. Anything? Mr. Sepatelli? Or, sorry, Ms. Crenns?
The financial plan was held in council chambers on April 20th, 2017. One written objection was received, and two people spoke in favor. The mill rate increase is 2% for 2017. The financial plan has been reviewed by the province and then until the municipal finance officer, and the draft plan, as well as the presentation that was presented on Thursday, April 20th, is available on the City of Thompson website.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counsel Foley. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the, oh, sorry, Counsel Wong.
Record vote, please.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counsel Foley, Counselor Smook, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Calata, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counsel Wong, Counselor Matichuk. It's carried. Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of the tandem gravel truck, and we have a tabulation of prices memo, and we also have a memo from the Director of Public Works and Operations. This is Resolution 2017-111, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Foley. Be resolved, the Council approve the 2017 financial plan. Go to Administration for support. Anything? Mr. Sepatelli? Or, sorry, Ms. Crenns?
The financial plan was held in council chambers on April 20th, 2017. One written objection was received, and two people spoke in favor. The mill rate increase is 2% for 2017. The financial plan has been reviewed by the province and then until the municipal finance officer, and the draft plan, as well as the presentation that was presented on Thursday, April 20th, is available on the City of Thompson website.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counsel Foley. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the, oh, sorry, Counsel Wong.
Record vote, please.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counsel Foley, Counselor Smook, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Calata, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counsel Wong, Counselor Matichuk. It's carried. Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of the tandem gravel truck, and we have a tabulation of prices memo, and we also have a memo from the Director of Public Works and Operations. This is Resolution 2017-111, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Foley. Be resolved, the Council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the purchase of one unit, new tandem gravel truck to Maxim Truck and Trailer for their tender price of $183,901.12, all taxes included, as per tender file number 11017. We'll go to Administration for support. Anything?
Just to say that we put a memo to that.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counsel Byer. Anything to add?
I'll explain.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counsel Matichuk?
I'll be voting against this resolution, quite simply because it doesn't come with the recommendation from Public Works and Infrastructure, and we have no input whatsoever on the spec-ing of these vehicles.
Thank you, Counsel Wong.
Thank you, Washit. Looking at the memo, I own some equipment as well. I understand the reason they say, well, need to replace it. It sounds like they're trying to run it to the ground and try to replace it. To me, a lot of preventable maintenance they can do, because they use it for sanding reason. They should wash the truck quite often, and the box, the box is only cost six to 10 grand, maximum two. Instead of replacing the box, they're replacing the tandem. That blow my mind. That blow my mind. Engine, I understand the engine could be run down eventually, but if you do regular maintenance, you can last longer. I believe Counselor Matichuk will agree with me. We have some old machine, it's still running like a charm, because we do take care of it. Due to that reason, I'm not supporting this. And also, there is another reason, Counselor Matichuk already mentioned, never go to the public work, discuss about why they need a tandem, and I cannot support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Sepatelli.
Just indicating, obviously, is that this tabulation of prices that's come forth is based on the capital plan that was approved by all of Council in order for us to continue with the, that process, and this is one of the items that was in that approved capital plan that we're bringing forth to Council.
Counsel Calata, and then Counsel Byer.
Thank you. I don't think that we need to replace a vehicle just because it's a certain age. I've heard before that maintenance or partial repairs would alleviate the necessity to purchase new vehicles, and as both Counsel Wong and Counsel Matichuk own and operate and maintain heavy equipment, I'm happy to take their advice, and I will oppose this as well. Thank you.
Counsel Byer, first.
Just a question in terms of the process that was followed. The request for this replacement, I believe, came from Public Works through the Public Works Committee, and the requirements would also have come through that committee when establishing the request list, if you will, prior to budget time. I just want to confirm that it did indeed go through Public Works once, at least.
So the establishment of projects, capital projects, depending on what they are, go through each respective committee of Council?
Mr. Kowalski? Yeah, just to clarify a couple things. Blocks is $22,000 to replace the engine. Short block, we're looking at about $24,000. We have engine problems now. We look at the electric, we're looking at about $8,500. So we have a 1998 truck. It's 20 years old, multiple operators. It's done its time. We made a recommendation, we, through the budget process, we did have illustrations pictures presented to Council and those involved in the Public Works Committee. They were able to see the condition of the truck and even requests to take a look at. So we don't have an issue with the illustrations.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions? Counsel Smook.
Yes, I know I saw, pardon me, I know I saw pictures of it at one of the Public Works Committee, and we had talked about it, and we'd talked about nickel and diming it to death with the $20,000 here, $20,000 there. And I, too, agree that it's time to replace it. It's costing us more money every year than what it's going to save, and it gets to the point with the erosion that it can cause many concerns, but it's out on the road full time, Mrs. Sander.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Just to like to say that I'm sure that we do do regular maintenance on this piece of equipment and all of them. I'm sure that there is a regular maintenance schedule that is followed, and this was part of our budget process, and this has been discussed in council chambers since October through the budget process, so I'll be following and supporting Administration's request.
Counsel Wong, any other counselors that haven't spoken yet?
Thank you, Washit.
Just a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since Deputy Mayor mentioned about the regular maintenance, I'd like to see the report from the regular maintenance for this particular truck. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? If Counsel would allow, I'd like to speak as the mayor. Some of the points that I was going to raise have been already raised by Counsel and by Administration. I just want to remind Counsel as a whole that the process that we've followed each and every year for capital projects is that the specific capital line items are reviewed by the individual committees that they are applicable to, in this case, Public Works. It's been mentioned by Public Works members that this was discussed, it was mentioned by Administration, this was discussed. Want to refresh Counsel's memory in regards to the budget deliberations. I'm looking at a spec sheet that specifically talked to and was presented to this Council during the budget deliberations, that spoke to an amount of dollars spent to date on maintenance of $57,000. It spoke specifically to the box replacement of $22,000. It spoke specifically to the safety-related projects in regard so that this unit is used for street sanding in the winter, and it runs seven days a week. This was heavily discussed at the budget deliberations with all of Council, and at that time was proposed and accepted as part of the 2016-17 capital program. This is the formality of bringing the resolution forward to purchase what was discussed and approved in the capital budget by all of Council. So with that, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It stands passed. Thank you.
Is there a record vote?
Thank you. Recorded, voting in favor, Counsel Foley, Counsel Smook, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counsel Byer, Counsel Ellis, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counsel Wong, Counsel Calata, Counsel Matichuk. Next up, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the IT managed services provider and a memo from the Chief Financial Officer. This is Resolution 2017-112, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Foley. Be resolved, the Council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the IT managed services to Epic for their tendered price of $5,085 per month. Taxes extra as per tender file number 1171, 11717. And we have a memo from the Chief Financial Officer. Ms. Crenns?
Yes, our previous IT support left the community in early January, which necessitated the requirement of an RFP to be sent out. We had three companies that responded. They were very high, they scored very high on all the criteria in our evaluation. The one key signature factor with Epic was that they provided two hours onsite technician every week, with the majority of the work being done remotely. And the contract allows for under-minute tickets to you, all by all of our users, help desk support, remain to five, monthly communication reports, assisting with our annual IT construction needs for budget purposes, as well as guaranteed same-day response. The RFP prices are within the 2017 operating budget of $100,000.
Go to the mover, Counsel Byer.
I'll be supporting this, and I just want to point out that although Epic is slightly more expensive on a monthly basis than the one ahead of it, in terms of annual costs, it's far less because they don't have any additional fees. What they're quoting for the monthly cost is the cost, there's nothing else. And it's important that we have IT services. When computers and phones and other processes that rely on software systems go down, it makes it difficult, if not impossible, for the city to service the people of Thompson. So this is an important one.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Counsel Foley?
Not too sure if I'm going to be able to support or not support this. I share the, I have the opinion that we should have a permanent IT position within the City of Thompson, and I feel that that'd be more useful than hiring out a contractor. We've had issues in the past with unavailability with having a contractor, and so I think therefore I'll be, I'll be voting opposed to this.
Casper, sorry. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Do that again. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the website hosting and redesign. We have a tabulation of prices, website hosting and redesign, and we have a memo from the Communications Officer. Resolution 2017-113, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Foley. Be resolved, the Council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the City of Thompson website redesign and hosting to All Net Municipal Solutions for their tendered price of $25,960 plus taxes, as per tender file number 10417. We'll go to Administration for support. Casper?
On our, when our RFP went out on February 1st, it goes on March 13, 2017. We received seven proposals of All Nets. Was a very clear choice, essentially, a lot of websites offered, custom services, All Nets, does specifically city websites, and therefore, you would use a cost significantly. Their pricing structure works for us, and we aren't entirely sure whether this will be our full cost for the website yet. Regardless, we also work with them for All Net meetings, and we have a federal contract as far as their services are, so I'm very excited for new features and websites to offer.
Thank you. We'll go to Counsel Byer as the mover. Anything to add?
Yes, and I think it's important, we're quite often, I hate to use the word criticized, but that's the truth, quite often criticized for what our website doesn't do for us, and I'm looking forward to having this totally refreshed, and it's, it'll be in good hands.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Deputy Mayor Valentino?
I have a question, and I'm not very techie, so if it's not a very smart question, it's fine, but a couple of meetings ago back, we agreed to get the software, whatever, so that we can book stuff online with the Rec Department. I was the only happy one here that will be able to online book for renting the rink or swimming lessons. So will this be compatible to that? Like, will they, you know, interconnect or whatever?
I think that's something we're looking at, we're looking at all sorts of different online things, or booking and registering, or pay for licenses. We're going to have to look a little bit down a bit right now, Thompson, very broad strokes, that's definitely something we can't take.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Wong?
I will vote against this. Reason, first, I remember when, before I make my comment, I'd like to find out one thing. Is this redesign the website for City of Thompson?
Sorry, bud.
Is it the website redesign the, okay? Thank you. Okay. Back in the day, I remember I read the description of Communication Officer, one of the criteria is that must able to develop the website. So why are we outsources this? That's one question. Second, I've been sitting in this room more than two and a years past halfway point. Every time when it's budget over budget, we always end up giving out the extra. I mentioned before, I mention again, when it's over budget, why bring it to this table? They should bring it back and re-tender and find a good price, because you said $20,000. Now it's over budget again. Why are we approving this? Thank you.
Go to Mr. Sepatelli, just in regards to the process of tendering.
Yeah, so the process of tendering, and I'll answer the other question first in regards to what Counsel Wong is alluding to in the Communications Officer. The intent of the Communications Officer is not to design a website. The intent of the Communications Officer is not to design a website. The intent of the Communication Officer is to manage the website, ensuring that the content is, is appropriate and up-to-date. In regards to the, the process, obviously, we, from a public perspective, is to send out, whether it's an RFP or tender, to ensure that it meets the qualifications that we're sending that document out, and really, the response back for, for council's consideration is to deal with the, the tenders that come forth and the, and the recommendations.
Just in regards to dealing with AllNet, I'm very pleased that they're the ones up for recommendation. As I stated to you earlier by Casper, that AllNet is the system that all of council and administration uses for meetings and keeping all of our systems online for accessibility. And as far as re, re-imaging and retooling the website, it's, it's very important that we maintain and be current with our virtual presence. For anybody who is coming to Thompson or visiting, the very things that they first do is check out what our virtual presence be, is, whether it be through social media, through our city website. So, we need to make sure that we stay current with ongoing trends, and to utilize the system more efficiently with, say, the new recreation system software that we're going to be developing in there. What we have in place right now, I've been, you know, vocal on it, it currently doesn't work well with the direction that we want to take it, and I look forward to seeing what we can do. In regards to spending the money on it, you, anybody who Googles Thompson, you know, they get a few things, and the City of Thompson website's one of them, so we need to make sure that we have as much information on there, easily accessible, and manageable by anybody who, who uses it.
Sepatelli?
I'm just wondering if we can get the Chief Financial Officer sort of to talk about the budget line item. I mean, obviously, the, the proposals had a multi-year, but really, I believe the budget line item was based on the first year, correct?
Right, the, the budget that's been out through the twenty fifteen, so, the budget of twenty thousand dollars compared to the, the year one figure of nine thousand four hundred and ninety. The next additional three years would be addressed to those, the annual charge for those years.
Yeah, so, just, just to address Counselor Wong's comment, voting in favor budget, this is not over budget. Counselor Byer?
The point I wanted to make, it's actually ten thousand dollars under budget for what we've discussed this year. That's, but I, I can see why Counselor Wong would have been led to believe that it was over budget because of the table.
Just want to touch base into the comment that was made in regards to our Communications Officer being a web developer. A web developer is a full-time position in, in the tech industry that is definitely not something that we would have somebody as a part-time, but in speaking to what City Manager Sepatelli said, managing and developing a website are two totally different positions.
Counselor Wong?
First of all, I'd like to clarify this, because this term you guys keep me out of the equation, so I don't know, I'm based on what is shown here. So, I didn't know it's for one year, okay? So, I have a right based on what I see here, twenty thousand, and it comes to twenty-five, so I have to make my comment and then talk about it. Secondly, I'd like to make a, not make a recorded vote, please.
To clarify Counselor Wong's comment, as a counselor, you were involved in the budgetary process throughout, from that perspective, and so to allude that anyone was kept out of a loop is erroneous. This council has been fully disclosed in regards to the budget, and each and every counselor has the opportunity, that whenever there is an, an issue, an incident, or whatever that they want more information on, or need clarification on, to reach out to the city manager for that clarification. Counselor Foley?
Just want to also add that every member of this council is always open and welcome to all other committee meetings, with the exception of HR.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Valentino?
I'd just like to make the public aware that this information for tonight's meeting, council and everybody got Friday, so if you choose to read it or not, perhaps you should read the information before you ask questions, when the information is right in front of us, that each one of us has the same information.
Thank you. With that, Counselor Calada.
We, we discuss these issues at, at budget meetings, we come to some sort of consensus, and usually, when the discussion around this table takes place for the approval of a, a resolution, and it's something that we have basically approved in a budget, I think that we need to make a note to be aware of that the next budget year, so we can address it then, because there's lots of things. I'm not a technical person, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but if I hear an argument the next year, I will be aware that, that that situation exists, and, and it's not the end, we can address it in another budget year.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Yes, just two seconds. Voting in favor, Counselor Foley, Counselor Smoak, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Calada, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Wong, Counselor Madichuk. Now, we're moving into bylaws. This is the second reading of bylaw nineteen fifty-four, two thousand, or two zero one seven, levy bylaw. We have the accompanying bylaw nineteen fifty-four dash two zero one seven, and we have a memo from the Chief Financial Officer. Resolution is two zero one seven one one four, moved by Deputy, or, sorry, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Smoak. Be resolved, the bylaw nineteen fifty-four dash two zero one seven being the levy bylaw of the City of Thompson for the year two thousand seventeen, be given second reading as amended. We'll go to administration for support. Ms. Krenz?
So, the little bylaw was amended from the first reading to section three, to reconcile to page eight of the financial plan, from sixteen point eight six two to seventeen point two eight two. The total mill rate for the City of Thompson is twenty-one point four, compared to twenty sixteen of twenty point nine eight zero, a difference of point four two zero two percent. The business tax rate is four point two four, four percent compared to four point three nine percent in twenty sixteen, and the special levy amount is eighty-three eighty for twenty seventeen compared to one hundred and seventeen point seven for twenty sixteen.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counselor Byer.
I'll be supporting this. The budget deliberations can get pretty complex and complicated at times, and I think it's probably impossible to remember every single conversation. But this budget does reflect the, the consensus of, of this council during those discussions. I think it's got some very interesting highlights. The, taking the accommodation tax and having a partnership arrangement with the hotel industry to help further tourism in that department, I think, is key. There's a, a small increase in taxation, however, for the first time that I can recall, since I was on the executive of the Chamber of Commerce, the business tax has actually decreased. It's a small decrease, but it's actually a decrease. We've been able to, again, budget for all of our capital works without having to go to tax dollars, and we still are not touching any of our debentures. We're able to protect the room that we need for our wastewater treatment plant. There's a lot of positives in this budget, and I'm sure if we wanted to pick it apart, we would all find something we don't like with it, but I don't believe in throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so I will definitely be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Valentino?
I just want to comment that a couple things that we did try to do different this year, and it was mentioned at the financial presentation on Thursday, that as a council, we did go to the public first at the beginning of our budget deliberations. So, we did have the public meeting in the fall, I think it was October, November, to ask for public input, and then we also put a survey out to the public for the end of November, December, they were due back, I think, around January tenth. So, we did try to involve the public more to get to the, to the bottom line today. And then, we did do two presentations to our employees last Thursday also, and then we had the, the public meeting, obviously, on Thursday evening. So, I would hope that for next year, this council will still look at the direction of involving the public, and that we would get more public input at the public meeting in the fall and at the survey, if that's the direction of council, because it really wasn't overly well-attended at all, and either was our surveys, but we did try to make the effort this time as a council. So, I'll definitely be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, counsel? Counselor Ellis?
Many things I like about this budget. You know, in terms of infrastructure renewal, I think, I think that's very important. We, we always do a, a very aggressive summer program in terms of that. We're looking at Selkirk Avenue being resurfaced, as well as multi, the multi-use path is going to move into, onto Princeton, Princeton Drive in the Eastwood area, which I think is very significant. Also, we, we've, since Thompson Unlimited is no longer, no longer there as our economic development agency, we are be hiring an economic development officer, so that's, that's also part of the budget, and I think that's very significant, so I'll be, I'll be, I'll be in support of it.
Counselor Wong?
Record a vote, please.
Any other questions or comments by council? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counselor Foley, Counselor Smoak, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Calada, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Wong, Counselor Madichuk. It's carried. We now are to the third reading of bylaw nineteen fifty-four two zero one seven. Resolution two zero one seven one one five, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the bylaw nineteen fifty-four two zero, two zero one seven be given third and final reading, and that it do now pass. This will be a recorded vote as per our bylaws. Administration, anything to add? Counselor Byer as the mover?
I think pretty bad.
Thank you. Counselor Calada?
Well, the municipal act allows for two readings at one meeting, and we have many bylaws where it's a housekeeping matter, or where there's full agreement amongst counselors for that bylaw to be passed. I have never in my twenty-odd years seen full agreement of the budget, and I am opposed to two readings in the same night. So, I won't be supporting the third reading. I think that we should have three separate, we should approve it on three separate occasions.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Voting in favor, Counselor Foley, Counselor Smoak, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Wong, Counselor Calada, Counselor Madichuk. It's carried. Now, we're going into the mayor's report, and this is for the timeframe of April eleventh to the twenty-fourth. Along with Counselor Wong and City Manager Gary Sepatelli, we attended the AMM Association of Manitoba Municipalities Mayor's Reeves and CAO's meetings, and the two thousand and seventeen provincial budget in Winnipeg on eleventh, on April eleventh. Along with Counselor Wong and City Manager Gary Sepatelli, we attended the Association of Manitoba Municipalities City Caucus meeting, and along with City Manager Gary Sepatelli, I met with Deputy Ministers Grant Doak and Jamie Wilson in Thompson, in Winnipeg on April twelfth. The Thompson Aboriginal Accord meeting was held on April nineteenth. Two thousand and seventeen financial plan presentation was made to the employees, the public hearing for the two thousand and seventeen financial plan, and a conference call was, was, was held. A conference call was also held with Amanda Nash of the Heart and Stroke Foundation on April twentieth. I attended the two thousand and seventeen Valley Emergency Services Appreciation Night on April twenty-second. The weekly Thompson twenty twenty conference calls continue. The monthly water treatment plant meetings also continue. I just want to speak briefly in regards to safety, in regards to river safety and lake safety. Again, although it's not moving fast enough, we are seeing a melt. We're also seeing freeze thaw conditions, so the condition of the river is absolutely not to be on the river at this time. It's a fast-flowing river, and it's deteriorating quickly. Not so much in the lakes, but there is a lot of slush and various spots, depending where you are, so, and the trails are bare in some spot, and some have snow still. So, in that regard, please pay attention to the, the trails, the rivers, and the lakes. Make sure that you let someone know where you're going and when you're returning, and make sure that your equipment is in, in safe condition from that regard. Counselor Foley, did you want to add to that specific?
Yes, just in regards, especially to the trails, the trailbreakers have closed down the trails in and around the city, however, the, there is still usage. Use extreme caution, especially around the swampy areas, stuff like that. We've had, unfortunately, we had a snow machine go into the water thaw, and I'd like to not see that happen up here, so please use caution on those trails, whether it be snow machine or ATV, and of course, make sure that when you are out on these trails, you don't go to, you make sure somebody's with you.
I have two proclamations before I go to the committee meetings. By virtue and authority vested in me, and as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, as National Day of Morning in the City of Thompson. Secondly, by virtue of an authority vested in me as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim May first to the seventh, two thousand and seventeen, as Mental Health Awareness Week in the City of Thompson. And I'll go to other council members for reports on any other city business that they have, they attended to on our behalf during the months of, or during the timeframe of April eleventh to the twenty-fourth. Anybody? Counselor Smoak?
I just want to say that I'll be out of town on April twenty-eighth, so I will be thinking about the National Day of Morning. It'll be uppermost. And also, before our next meeting, we're going to have the trade show, an annual event in Thompson, from May fifth to seventh, that we should all take in. Thank you.
Any council, I'm, I'm going to put Counselor Calada on the spot, because I don't know the specifics. Relay for life is this weekend?
It's the twenty-ninth, yes. The survivors are asked to be there at four o'clock. The regular events will start, I believe, around seven. At five? Okay, thank you. So, there's some teams that are doing some fantastic fundraising. I, I know one team is well over two thousand dollars now, and it's a little late to say so, but the top two fundraisers receive a prize from Comair of a, an airline ticket to Winnipeg. So, I haven't been part of the committee this year, but because I've been involved, I, I know that, that it's an important event, people should get out and, and support it.
And that'll take place at the VRCC at, in the CA Nesbit Arena. And just to speak to the organizing committee, it's well-known that in Manitoba, our relay for life is the largest raiser of funds in Manitoba, and should be congratulated on that. Counselor Calada to add?
Yes, I just wanted to add that Thompson can be very proud. We raise more money per capita than any community in Manitoba, and that may be the fact for any community in Canada, so we can be very proud of that fact. We raise a, a lot of money here in Thompson.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Foley, Counselor Byer, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. We stand adjourned. Have a good evening.